All right, well, it is six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started on call that meeting to order. And Pat, are you able to do a full call remotely?
Uh, yes, I can. Sorry, I'm in a hotel room and on my laptop, so I'm a little slow, but um. Check, uh, let's see. Uh, Nick. Reddard. Harry. Jason Mellon.
Reddell.
Sarah Knack.
Present.
Christine Gator.
Here.
And. If the rest of you, I would, I think I heard John, John Gator.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I saw Janice there.
Hi, Pat.
Hi. Um, and who else do we have in the room?
So, um, Don Rhodes is here.
Okay.
It's, and it's uh, Don, D O N, Rhodes, R H O A D S.
Okay, and that's Patty, right?
And that's it.
Okay, so no Ethan or any trustees tonight, right? Other than John.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So before we jump into the agenda, since we do have Don here, just wanted quickly go around the room and introduce ourselves, um, so if you could just state your name. Any affiliations you may have, a little bit about you, um. So I can start, my name is Nick Reed David, I'm with Meridian Trust Federal Credit Union, uh, branch manager here in town. So been in banking about sixteen years, been in Wellington, October will be seven years, seven years, eight years. So this is my first time getting involved in town. And doing this since it started last year. And I'm the chair. There.
I'm Sarah, and I work during the day as a bookkeeper and then later as a student. Um, done my degree backwards, I did all of my accounting classes first, and now I'm taking history. Um. Yeah. And I've been here since, yeah, last year.
Great, I'm Jason Mellon, I've been in the town for about twelve years. Uh, my background was finance, and I'm ready to run my report here.
Christine Gator, um, bookkeeper, my own business for seventeen years. Um.
He knows. Probably Janice too.
Okay, and I'm John Gator, we went a little bit on the interviews, but I'm on the board of trustees, uh, we've been out here in Wellington about five years, been on the board since twenty twenty. Patty and I worked together with a couple of other talents, tried to come up with the idea of the finance committee. And the board liaison for the committee, so.
Okay, and Pat?
Yeah, so Pat Johnson, um, I work for the city of Fort Collins in purchasing. And have lived in the area for, um, gosh, about nineteen years.
Okay, great, great, thanks, everyone, and we do have Don on the agenda a little bit later. So we'll get to hear all about you and background, how this all came together, and what the status of everything is now, in just a little bit. When we move into public comments. Seeing none, we will move into action items, so minutes from last month. Anyone see any changes, any updates? Right, entertain them, motion to approve?
The move. I think that.
Perfect, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Does the same sign, seeing none, motion passes.
Sorry, I didn't catch who said the, the motion and who seconded.
Christine Gator for the motion. And Sarah Knack seconded.
Great, thank you.
All right, so. We wanted to move into just a review of our ordinance and bylaws of our committee. Um, I was installed with the chair in June, of course, I missed last month, um, last month ended up being a little more active, uh, than I had anticipated in my absence. And I really wanted to make sure we're on a solid footing, um, there's been a lot of changes in the town. Um, from staff, from having Dawn now. Uh, make sure that we are all in agreement and understanding of what our role and responsibility is as the advisory committee to the trustees. Uh, so I just thought I would bring up and put in front of us the ordinance and put in front of us the bylaws. Uh, go through, there are a couple of things I did want to point out. Um, one of the ones being, let me see if I can find it again. Uh, that, well, really, we're, we're an advisory, um, board to the board of trustees. So just keeping that, that concept in mind, we're, we're here to provide input. John, or trustee Gator, excuse me, is our liaison to the board, so it's that two way street. Information comes from the board. We provide our opinion, our feedback, as, as the community members, it goes back to the board. Uh, we're not necessarily here to write policy and procedure, but if the board wants our opinion on policy and procedure, we're here to give that. Uh, we, it, it just keeping, just keep that advisory aspect in mind, what, what our, our role is. And that does include making recommendations, reviewing, um, monthly reports. And being able to give that input, so. Um, just looking at the ordinance, there, there's that, there, there was also one part I did want to point out about, um, meetings. That if we ever have a month where we don't have anything to discuss, it is okay for us to uh, not have a meeting, so we don't have to, if there's nothing on the agenda, we, uh, just it could come up, but there wouldn't be any, now we're going into budget season, so I don't think that's gonna happen for a few months. But if there is a month, um, we don't necessarily have to meet. Um. And then if we go into the bylaws, now the bylaws. We recently amended in June, just to make some absent, um, the absentee information clear. But a lot of the bylaws do come directly from the ordinance. So just me, I wanted, I thought it'd be good for us to have a clear starting point going forward, um, we are gonna be per the, per the ordinance and the bylaws. Looking for replacements that the, the trustees will appoint. So I believe that's already in the process. Uh, we just need to be aware of when we have new people coming in, especially now a new chair. Where we all, where we all sit, so any, if there's any questions or discussion, um, I think that would be a good time to make sure we're all on the same page.
When are we gonna get monthly reports, Mr. Rhodes?
I'm actually gonna go over that when I do my update.
And I do think that's important to call out, is there are not only expectations of us as the, the committee, there are expectations of what's supposed to be given to us. They're making sure, again, that two-way street that we're, we're meeting that on both sides, we're doing our part, but the other side is doing their part as well.
So the only thing that I wanted to bring up is just when we created the finance committee, there was no finance committee, but with all of our other boards, we typically will have the chair of the committee sit in on the interviews, so as long as you're able to do that, Patty can, or Ethan, I guess, is handling that, we'll try to coordinate you into when we do the interviews for the different boards. Um, and depending on how we do them, sometimes they're mixed with other boards, so like, if we have multiple people, you might just sit there during one, but during the finance one, you would be part of that group of how, whatever trustee show up. Um, if for whatever reason you can't make the time, um, typically what we've had done is if you maybe assign another member of the committee to come in your place, but that's typically the role we have the chair of the board do. Is join up for the interviews so that they're able to give that input, because you're sitting here, you're working with those people, you know the personalities on the board, whether you got a special one, so being able to bring that to the board of trustees, so it's and outside, right, I'm here as the liaison, but I'm also approving it, so it's good to have that separate entity that's able to say, hey, this is what we think, so. But other than that, so I wanted to highlight.
Understood, thank you. And I will do my best, also, to make that, after that. Uh, another aspect that I did want to call out, and is actually gonna, if there's no further discussion, move us into our next action item. Is the, uh, per the bylaws, um, should any officer resign at the next scheduled meeting, which would be today, we do need to fill that vacancy. So, um, moving into the next item, we do need to have a election for a finance committee vice chair. Thought I would open it first to any self nominations. Don't all jump at once. Seeing none, I'm gonna throw out a nomination, I'm gonna throw, see if Jason would be interested.
Yeah, ultimately, if he needed that.
Any other nominations? So I guess I can do.
Acclamation?
Acclamation afterward, yeah, guy acclamation of, thank you, Jason, for being our vice chair.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
All right, so last action item, we are making great, I guess, so thank you. Like I introduced Don Rhodes, the Baker City U S, who is our new finance director and founder.
So you, so, yeah, so there's information in your packet about the process.
Hand over Patty.
It's okay, no, it wasn't quite, we're all kind of looking at each other, so the process itself is written down in your packet. Uh, how we went through the request for qualifications, proposals received, interviews were held, the team recommended Mr. Rhodes through that interview process. The board of trustees approved the engagement letter on July eighteenth. And Mr. Rhodes started on August seventh and has been running ever since. Um, I'm really excited for him to be here, we, I can tell you, staff feels uh, there's a very calming presence about, um, what he is bringing to the town and how we are working through the issues that we've talked about in the past, so I'll go in and let him talk about this, he's, he's getting up to speed and it's happy he's here, so thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, and good evening, everyone, uh, my second and second week anniversary today, so excited about that. Um, just a, a little bit, so those that interviewed me know this, but a little bit of my background, I, I started out in the auditing world. Um, auditing local governments, school districts, special districts, cities, that sort of thing, so very early in my career. Um, that's what I, I did, um, got my CPA license along the way. Um, but when an opportunity came up to work for a city, I, I, uh, took that path. And worked with three different cities, um, along the way during the bulk of my career. So early in my career, I got to see a lot of different agencies, and then I worked for three different cities, and then about five years ago. I decided to try the, the consulting world, and I counted them up just the other day, in the last five years, um, Wellington, that is the thirtieth agency I've worked with in the last five years, so not all interim assignments like this, you know, there's some of them are smaller kind of focused specific assignments. Um, but some of them have been, um, you know, they're usually four or five months, one as long as eight months. Um, helping to fill in between, uh, finance director CFO types. So that's the kind of work I, I enjoy doing that, even if it's a challenge, um. Uh, and it usually is, you usually don't call a firm like this unless, unless it is a challenge, um, so that's, that's uh, kind of the, the role that I've played, so I, I, I think, um, if it's any help, um. I, what I bring to the table is I, I've done this, this kind of work in a, in different size agencies with lots of different uh, systems, but you know, at the end of the day, um, they all do kind of the same thing, they're, they're serving the, they're doing public service, they're fixing streets and they're cutting grass on the parks and they're keeping people safe, and so a lot of that looks the same, um. Uh, but each, each agency has its own challenges and its own unique, uh, new, unique issues, so I'm, I'm excited about jumping in with it. Uh, as far as that update goes, let me try to bring up the date, I'll just, I, I gave something in writing here, so I won't read that verbatim, but just to give you, uh, an update there, on the audit, um, as you know, and let me just say, first of all, we normally, this time of year, I wouldn't be sitting here talking about you know, the audit from a year or two years previous, um, in August. Normally, the audit would be done and wrapped up and to the board. You know, by July at least, if not sooner, that is, that is possible, and that, that is normal, but we're, we're not quite there yet, so the twenty twenty-one audit, uh, the auditors are telling me are, is done, and there were no significant issues, though they're in uh, kind of a peer review mode right now, it's a small firm, I think there's three folks total, sounds about right. So one does the audit, the other one peer reviews what the one did, so, um. They, I'm trying to get an update from them, because it's a small firm and they have to do their C P E training, I think they were out last week, um, I got the indication they were at training, so if, uh, you're doing CPA training and there's only three of you, not much else happened, so I've left a couple of messages today, and I'm, I'm trying to get an update on what, when are they done with twenty twenty-one, and, and still waiting to hear back on that. Um, hopefully that's weeks and not much longer than that. Um, so twenty twenty-two audit. You know, we've begun that process, they've requested documents, we've begun giving them documents. Um, I don't have a trial balance to give them yet, um. So, uh, you know, they can't, they can't really jump into the audit, but they can do their, they can do their interim testing, they can test our system, they can test our internal controls. Uh, they can begin doing a lot of things, um, in kind of a, you know, before they have to do field work.
That's, that's, and the trial balance comes from the audited twenty twenty-one.
So, um, so the trial balance I'm talking about here for twenty twenty-two would be, is basically the basic financial statements, it's the rev- revenues, expenditures, and the balance sheet. That we, we would give to them saying, we as staff, your, here, here auditors are our books that you can audit. You know, they're, they audit what we give them, so we have to give them a basic income statement and balance sheet is essentially what it what, what I mean by trial balance, the trial balance just means it's not been audited yet, and it's our, it's our take on, on what it is. I can't, I can't just run a printout from the system right now, because uh, as I talked, told the board last month, I'd like to do a thoroughly methodical look through revenues and expenditures in twenty twenty-two, now twenty twenty-one, I'm not giving a lot of look to, because they've audited, they say they're about done. For me, that's the starting point, at the end of twenty twenty-one. Well, I'll get that, get into that in the next section, but, uh, that's where we are with the twenty twenty-two audit, I, once twenty twenty-one is done, twenty twenty-two, I, I'm thinking that fit, uh, finishes up this calendar year as well, I can't think of why, uh, why it wouldn't. Um, so that's where we are on the, on the audits. Now, general, general financial reporting, um. You know, once we've got that twenty twenty-one audit, and I already have their trial balance with their adjusting entries. I can't, I can't say they're final yet, because they're still reviewing, so it's possible another, you know, journal entry could, could pop up. But I'm working with what I have, so I have their, their adjusted trial balance and their adjusted entry, so that gives me a good, you know, December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, what was the fund balances in all of the funds? So I could start from there, so my focus really last two weeks has been a kind of methodical look through revenues and expenditures, um. You know, starting in the general fund, and I'm working my way through the enterprise funds now, um, because those are kind of the biggest ones. It, as far as, do the revenues look right, do the expenditures look right, are there anomalies that we, uh, that we need to look into? Uh, some, it's not an in-depth, I'm not going, you know, transaction by transaction, there's not the time for that, that wouldn't be a good use of the, of the time, um, so it's a little bit of a, um, of an eighty-twenty look, a little bit of a um, of a triage sort of approach to it, what are, what are the areas that have the most risk and where are the biggest dollars in that?
What year are you looking at?
Twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
So gotta bring twenty twenty-two up to date, because it's used for a number of things, I mean, not only do I need to give the auditors trial balance. Um. So that, that's for that, but we're about ready to start the budget process, and to start the budget process. I gotta know the end of twenty twenty-one, and then I gotta follow through twenty twenty-two, so I know the end of twenty twenty-two, that gives me the beginning balance for twenty twenty-three, the year we're in. The very next step that, you know, listed here then is that twenty twenty-three, then we look at revenues just the same, just that I can't, it's not, the year is not done yet, so we'll look at we'll update our revenue estimates, see if anything looks out of line there. Uh, look at our expenditures, um, as well. And then that's where I, I could say, once, once I've finished twenty twenty-two and got, and gotten through twenty twenty-three, that a similar kind of look. I think that's when we can, we can turn on the financial statements, um. I, I just, I don't feel comfortable with, with a financial statement just yet, because I, I, I'd like to finish this review. Because the types of things I've seen, nothing earth-chattering, but just, it's the sort of thing that you would see if you've had a lot of turnover in finance at various positions over a number of years. It's not, it's nothing nefarious that I've run across, it's just, you know. We're supposed to do transfers from this fund to that fund, and that happened for the first six months of the year, but not the second six months of the year. Nothing nefarious there, it's just that there was a turnover in the department head position, and something just didn't get picked up. And things like that, um. I, I've run across things like that, so just going through and saying, okay, well, we need to book the other half of that year of those transfers and um, or, you know, in twenty twenty-two, the board approved a, a budget transfer, uh, from the general fund to the water and sewer fund. Uh, to help that fund out in May of twenty twenty-two, okay, that, that board approved, um, budget transfer got, uh, got into the budget in our financial system, but the actual transfer was not made, the actual transfer where you move the money from this fund to that fund, just a journal entry, it's not, not, not a big deal, but it just never got made. Uh, so, and we're catching up on those things, we're finding those things, and, um, we're gonna update twenty twenty-two. And I, uh, just begun to kind of piecing together, uh, you know, all the different pieces, so we can get a, an updated ending year twenty twenty-two, um, fund balance for all of the funds. Uh, and then we'll start in twenty twenty-three and do the same thing. Uh, so, and that's, that's, I think we can do financial statement, I think we're, we're close, we're, we're weeks, not months, if that helps. If that helps any, uh, because the end of twenty twenty-two is necessary, because I need it not only, what was it, I need it not, not only for the budget process and for the audit. Uh, but for any discussions, uh, coming up about any kind of, you know, rate issues, you know, water and sewer rate issues. You know, you gotta know what your fund balances are in the water fund, sewer fund, storm drain fund. And for, I haven't really, I haven't gotten as deep into those funds yet as the general fund. Um, but just from what I've gathered, there's, there's some general confusion there in a few places, so I just want to make sure we know rock solid what the, what the fund balances are there, um, as well. Uh, so I think we're, we're, we're getting closer to, it's moving along, um, quickly. But my, if it helps any, my, uh, my priority has been, we've, we've got the budget coming up. Um, well, I guess they all are, we've got the budget coming up. And we've got the audit starting, so I've gotta get, I've gotta get the auditors the trial balance, and so that needs twenty twenty-two to be done. And we've got to get the budget started. And the budget, I guess I can flow into the next section here, um. To get the budget started, I need to know what my beginning fund balance is for, for twenty twenty-four, how, how do I know that, well, I gotta finish twenty twenty-two. Then I've got to do estimates for twenty twenty-three to get a projected, this is an audited, but a projected ending balance for twenty twenty-three, that gives me my starting point for to come to the, the board when it's time to talk about budget twenty twenty-four, because your beginning fund balance and your revenue estimates, that's, that's the resources you have to work with in each fund, and then, um. As far as the, the expenditure side of the budget, that's underway, I think they listed it out here, the, the departments have already done their, you know, their first draft of the operating budgets. We've already met with all the departments. Um, so that, that's a first look, of course, we're meeting with them, we don't know what we could afford and not yet, because we haven't finished this other step as far as what we can afford, but we're meeting with them, uh, we have a meeting on the C I P part of the budget in a, a couple of weeks, I think, uh, with Public Works. Uh, let's see, I'll print it right then. Anything here? Yeah.
Salary.
Salary benefits, yeah, that's, um, you know, Stephanie's working on that piece of it, and that, that's a, that's a separate piece, we, we of we of course don't ask the departments to generate what's your salary and benefit, that's, we know what the positions are, um, we know what that's gonna cost, we know I mean, there was a meeting this morning, I didn't attend, but you know, there's some projected increases in like the health benefits and that sort of thing, so we can plug those pieces in separately. The I P budget, yeah, and then there's a series of meetings that are kind of driving the calendar here in, in, uh, September. Uh, in October, with both this committee and the board to, to go over the draft, the budgets there. Uh, sorry. No, I, 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 I hope that wasn't, uh, too, too much information, but it's just, I, I'm trying to take a very you have, you have to start with, what do you know, what, what's, what's solid, okay, well, I have an audited, you know, year end, or almost, have an audited year end twenty twenty-one. Okay, there's a good starting point, and the good news is that the fund balance that the auditors were using for the end of twenty twenty-one actually matches what's in our financial system. And I, I, I like tying things together, I mean, what the auditors are using ought to match what was shown in the budget, ought to match what's in the financial system. You know, the, these things need to tie together, I mean, don't they, they're, uh, for any of us, they have confidence that we're working off the same set of numbers, so um, so that's a good starting point, I feel good about the end of twenty twenty-one, as long as the auditors don't bring up anything else here in the next few days. Uh, twenty twenty-two is, my review there is nearly complete, I'm now beginning to tie out. Janice and I just spent a couple hours this afternoon looking through the general fund, we're beginning to tie out the ending fund balance for twenty twenty-two, and the general fund, then we're gonna move on to the enterprise fund. So I'm hoping to have the fund balance stuff done this week. Next week is kind of like, begin looking at revenue estimates. Um, and then the week after that, my uncle's turning a hundred, so I think I have to, have to go.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but the goal is, because I think we have some meetings starting up, uh, half, halfway through September, so but the goal is to get fund balance based on the revenue estimates up, up, uh, updated, so that we can have, uh, numbers to look at in, um, you know, early to mid September. And then along the way, as we get comfortable with twenty twenty-three. You know, we can start doing the financial statements again, so I, I think that's, like I said, weeks, not, uh, not months, what, what I don't want to do is just start just printing out whatever's in the system, not knowing what's behind it, because that doesn't do any of his any good, my experience has been, you, you, you lose more ground than you gain if you turn over statements. And they didn't agree with something else, or the next month they changed. I mean, we're gonna get to where, when a month closes, in fifteen days, we close that month.
Thank you.
And, oh yeah, I mean, my, my bookkeeper friends know that. You, you close the month, and it, that month doesn't change anymore.
Thank you.
Because month is closed, and then you, I mean, this is, this is basic stuff, but again, nothing nefarious going on, it's just when there's a lot of turnover, and I don't know how many folks who's been in finance in the last few years, but when there's left turnover, this, this kind of thing happens, everybody has a little different approach, and connections aren't quite made, and, you know, maybe procedures aren't written down, I mean, there's a number of things that can cause it. Um, but I, I've seen this before, and it's, um, it's all fixable. Uh, it just takes, I guess, more than two weeks.
I understand, I understand, but, um, so something for twenty twenty-three, when we dig at the financials, which could be wrong, and hopefully you'll fix them, um. For the March twenty twenty-three, Public Works salary was at over fifty percent of their budgeted amount. And so now that we've already passed half the year, I'm wondering if they've spent their whole budget, who's looking at that? Are we already over budget, we don't even know, because we don't have the financial, that's one of my concerns.
Okay, good, I'll, I'll make a note of that, because I, I did actually have a meeting with, um, with Kelly and Stephanie a week or two ago, and they are likewise concerned about um, how sal- how salaries and benefits are allocated, so it may be an allocation thing, not a, uh, right, not an over or under spending thing. But how, how they're supposed, so we've got this wonderful spreadsheet about how salaries are supposed to be allocated, but how that gets input into Casell with financials, as far as how they could be allocated when you push the button and somebody's paid, what fund does it go to? They, they were concerned about that, so we met about that, I have a, a big spreadsheet on that, but that's the twenty twenty-three thing?
Yes.
Apparently twenty twenty-two looked okay, so twenty twenty-three, I'm quite, I have the spreadsheet, and we're gonna look at that allocation, but I haven't quite knocked there yet. Um, till we get to twenty twenty-three.
Also, on the twenty twenty-three, um, reports, the, the line for budget on the report in, in Casell is incorrect. It doesn't match the approved budget numbers that the trustees did. So that just needs to be changed and corrected.
Yeah, that's, that's the kind of thing. Committee members and board members, I mean, I, I can completely understand your, um. Lack of confidence in, in the reports and concern, because, I mean, these are you know, I'll tell anybody, but it's, it's not, you know, accounting in some ways is not, is not rocket science, I mean, these things have got, you know, balancing is important, and things tying out is important. And consistently period to period, all these kind of really basic things we learned in the first accounting class. I, I followed a similar path, I, I did accounting first, but my graduate work was actually history. So I'm not sure what that is, I think, in, in a way, accountants are sort of historians, aren't they, that, or, you know, financial records, so it seemed like it, it was a good fit. Okay, well, I'll, I'll check on that too, for that twenty twenty-three thing, and any other concerns or thoughts you have about, uh, you know. Any, any of that, please let me know, and, because I, I am absorbing and learning as much as I can, but you folks have been looking at this uh, a lot longer, so if there's something that, you know, is a, something that's concerning you, just like these, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Uh, let me know, and, um. I will.
Well, I have a question about, um, the transfers for twenty twenty-two to the water fund that you were talking about, that, that, those haven't Well, I have a question about um, the transfers for twenty twenty two to the water fund that you were talking about, that, that, those haven't been done in Cas- Casell. Um, the only thing that will affect is the fund balance, is that correct? Because the budgets are the budgets, those aren't changing regardless of whether it has more money.
Yep, the budget is actually correct, the budget reflected what the, what the, the board said to do. It's just that the actual money didn't move from one fund to the other in that year, but we haven't closed that year, I know we're eight months later, but. Let alone not closing June or, we haven't closed. Twenty twenty two yet, so we, we can still fix all those things. Um, and you know, I don't say that lightly, that's, that's unusual, um, we should. You know, you get the.
Well, there's more money now than was recorded in the water fund balance.
If you were to, yeah, if you were to look at the water fund right now, y- yeah, there's, there's more money should be in there than is.
Okay.
Not missing, it's, again, noth- nothing nefarious, it just got, it just.
Didn't get transferred.
It did get transferred. But we're just, we're going line by line and looking at, this line makes sense, this line makes sense. Um, some cases, if there's another department head I need to talk to, I'll just sit down and talk with them. Uh, I'm only here physically a couple of days a week, but I use that time to kind of talk to the, talk to the other folks, um. Um, and they've been very, very helpful, you have a great team, they've, they've worked out, uh, uh, worked with me very well, so. Uh, but please, uh, I, again, I can use all the help I can get, so if there, if there are areas that you're, uh, that you've been wondering about. Uh, feel free to let me know here, or shoot me an email, or call, or however you want.
So it's actually an asset, Patty, what? Given that it's a contractual relationship, how, what is the preferred contact method? If we have questions or wanna.
Oh, right.
So I know, I think when the Board of Trustees talked about that, cause we wanted to try and make sure that we kept things consistent, since we didn't have like a ton of areas, so I would say. For this point, let's start with, if you've got questions, the Finance Committee maybe brought those to Nick. And then Nick, if you can send that to Dawn and copy Patty on that, and just that way, Nick can kind of be the point of contact. It's not trying to keep anyone else from talking to Dawn, um, we just, the board, one of the things we talked about, cause again, this is not what was in the budget, but we wanted to make sure that we keep Dawn's. Focus on, okay, what are the most important things that need to happen?
Right.
So, that way, if you guys have questions, funnel those to Nick, then he can give those to Dawn and Patty, and then the three of them work out. Kind of, okay, what things, is this a now thing, is this a get to it in a couple of weeks thing, and then Nick can just reply back to you guys, you know, so let's, let's start with that. And then maybe as things, we can change it, but does that sound good, Patty?
Sounds great, it makes sense.
So are we gonna get the audit, um, I know it's not complete, but when it is, will we get it? Um, emailed or at our next meeting?
Uh, I'm not sure what the practice has been.
Since this is the first year we've had an audit committee, I mean, uh, uh, Finance Committee with the audit, in the past, it has just been presented. The audit had been presented to the Board of Trustees in a regular meeting, I, I could not find an area where it was approved, it would look like it was just presented and. Essentially accepted, um, but if we get it ahead of time, I mean, I don't, I. I think I need to, I think I need to get it to the trustees first, um, and then we can.
Like just look at it, when it's on there, yeah.
Perfect, I mean, I can.
I think.
I can send a link out to the Finance Committee.
Going, going back to that, what are we supposed to be doing, and, and I think that if. If there are questions or concerns, or maybe in the management letter, things that need to be addressed, um, from. The trustees, they will make sure that we are.
Yep, in the loop.
In the loop about it.
Yeah, so where you guys would come into play, at least according to the ordinance, um, is when we come to the point where we're choosing an auditor, that is one of the things that's on there, is the independent auditor, so. When we're choosing an auditor for the next year, that's something that ideally would be brought to you guys for your input, not that you're picking the auditor, but. You guys would be a part of that process of selecting our auditors, so that we have your feedback for that. Which doesn't speak specifically to you guys reviewing the audit, so again, something that, if you want to, by all means, once it's been presented, you guys wanna review it. Knock yourselves out, and if you got feedback on it, I would love to have that to the board, but it's not a core thing that you have to do, so again, it'll be presented to the board, and then. Absolutely, if you guys want to look at it, that'd be great, but your, your role would be more in that front end, when we're choosing an auditor, to kind of see that those applications, what their review process is. And then hopefully pass a recommendation on to the Board of Trustees, so that when we're considering everything from staff, we'd also have that recommendation, yes.
I agree. I, I appreciate hearing that month didn't change after they've been closed out. That was a big.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's pretty. Standard, yeah, we get to the point that departments need to know that, okay, a month closed and fifteen days or, or less. That month is gonna be, you know, hard closed and not gonna change, they can print out their budget. I'm not sure exactly how departments are managing their budgets now, there's probably a lot of spreadsheets going on and things like that.
Exactly, yeah.
Happening, and, you know, the Casell system, from what I've seen, uh, I, I hadn't worked with it before, but it, it, it looks. Like it's a pretty good basic system, I think it's got all of the, all, all of what departments need to manage, but uh, we just have to. Give them the ability to do that.
Uh, we had good sell on, so.
You guys, Janice, do you wanna talk about that a little bit?
It was wonderful, I wish I could have recorded the whole thing to. Go through it day after day, but it was, it was great, and they were, they had so much energy. We'd get one thing done and on to the next, they were here, um. From morning to night, I mean, whatever we needed, it was great. Uh, we had three specialists, and when they weren't doing, you know, group sessions in here, we were doing one-on-one training. I felt miles ahead after our week with them, two and a half days with them. It's what we got, it was well worth whatever Kelly paid to have them come, it was well worth it. This is the first training, I ever formal training I've ever gotten, uh, Jeremy too. And then our new A P girl, she got to sit in on the lot, um, it's her. Third week here, I believe, so it was just a really good way to start off her employment and. I still consider myself new, so it's great, and got to talk a lot about the general ledger, uh. It was great.
I think having him here and them seeing our system and being inside our system now, when we call with questions, they'll know what we're talking about, where before it was just. You know, and another user, but now they know, they know what Wellington has, they know how we operate, we've gotten these face-to-face contacts now that. Um, now we have somebody we can actually call, as opposed to the one eight hundred, help me. So, I think that makes a big difference, so, yes, the big difference was one. Don mentioned that it was probably some of the best training teams experience, like the software company.
Yeah, worked with a lot of software companies, but they, they actually, like, the, the guy that was here for the general address stuff was an accountant. And you, you'd think that would be, they would be taken for granted, but no, it's, it's normally software folks. That have had a little training of their own on the financial system, but, um, you know, he, he was an accountant, he understood, general ledger, he understood. You know, how the numbers behind the system were supposed to work, and so it was, um, it was very, very valuable.
Thank you for asking.
That, that's all I had, but happy to answer any questions or.
The next month, with our meeting on the eighteenth. I know we're go- we're going into budgets, we're wrapping up one audit starting another, where, where do we see us? Not anything to hold you to, but just kind of. What are we gonna start seeing some of these closed out twenty twos and the numbers for twenty three, and. Yeah, I guess, is that a good question, Patty, where should we be in the budget process?
Yeah.
Y- yeah, so. Well, basically, this week, I, I'm, I'm working on twenty twenty two fund balances. Next week, revenue estimates, because really at the end of next week. Uh, because my hundred-year-old uncle, I kind of have to have all of that done, so that as the C I P part of the budget. At least the proposal part starts forming up, um. We'll be, we begin to be able to look at the whole picture and see what can be afforded. So what, what is the, uh, the first meeting here present draft budgets? So, September nineteenth, is that?
That's a work session, and those are just our admin budgets, and hopefully L C S O. Where the trustees will sit around the table, will present, we won't have any like, we won't know exactly what. What we're asking for, I mean, we have, we know what we're asking for, but we don't, we're not sure what we can afford yet, but wanting to get the trustees, at least in those discussions, what are priorities? For staff, and, you know, making sure aligned with the Board of Trustees, which is for, um, for the, for the following year. So we'll do that on September nineteenth, so the administrative side. Um, and then on October third, will be the same exercise with Public Works and Parks and Recreation and the five-year C I P. And then October tenth is that deadline, um, statutorily, that we're required to present a budget to the municipality. And then October sixteenth is the draft budget to the Finance Committee, so the whole thing, so it'll all been through. The book, it's been through, so it'll have been through my review, it has been through the Board of Trustee review and discussion, and then it'll come to the Finance Committee for review. Hopefully, we'll have, um, draft revenues by then, um, because we'll have the information from the assessor and things like that. And then the following date will be the budget bonanza, where we get a lot of feedback from the public that day, and then we'll bring it back again to the trustees. On October twenty fourth. For work session, combining all the public feedback we've been receiving and things like that. Um, we have an internal deadline of October twenty sixth for any budgetary changes, we need to. Shut it down at some point in time, where people cannot be making any more changes or corrections or modifications, so that we can start really putting that budget document together. Um, so we have pushed it out, um, our budget adoption to November twenty first. We can do it November fourteenth, the twenty first, or we could go into that first meeting in December, depending on how things go. Depending on what happens with Prop H H, I mean, we just, there's so many unknowns right now, but wanna leave it open. This is not, those last couple dates are not solid, we can definitely flex them as needed, depending on, um. How, how events go, we can also bring this back to, um, the Finance Committee in November, that would be a request.
I'll back up to September, I know we've talked briefly about this, I think, in our. I remember the work session, so I know on the nineteenth, where we're kind of presenting the draft budgets, I know in the past, we've had one member of the Finance Committee. Um, sit in on that to bring feedback, would there be any problems since the finance committee's the day before? Just letting them, we don't need to have staff there to talk about it, but just letting them kind of go over that. I know what we did in the past, with the Finance Committee could look over the draft budget, you give all of your comments to whoever, whether it's the chair or anyone. And then that person sits at the table with the rest of the board, again, the nice thing for that is it allows me, as the trustee, to talk about my questions. And not trying to also separate out my questions from the Finance Committee questions, because I don't wanna come across it, well, these are more, and that's like, no, these are from the Finance Committee, these are mine. Um, so I don't, don't we have any problem with that?
Jason will be there, because we're also bringing the board compensation that night. One night, so it's, so the work, kind of figure out numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that, if I can just try and, I, I had a similar question, but we aren't accepting, at least. What I'm seeing, Finance Committee is not involved until October.
If we don't do the September meeting, that is correct.
Okay, and then if we do the September nineteenth meeting.
Eighteenth, I think.
Well, our meeting.
No, our would be the.
Our meeting would be the eighteen. So if we participate in the nineteenth meeting, which is just part of the budget, would we also participate in the October third meeting? And when would we collect our input?
So, I would say that would probably be something you would just need to review that, so we can. When the board packet gets sent out, you would just need to review it, and then just email your individual, you wouldn't be able to have a meeting where you discuss October third, well, okay. If you want to, you can hold a special meeting.
Right.
So you could, if you guys want to hold a special meeting, you could do a special meeting, as long as we can make it scheduling, so that's one option, we could hold a special meeting. Probably the second, the day before it's out, um, or you guys could just collectively email your comments to the one person, so it's, if you guys are fun to do another meeting, just hold a special meeting. Then you can discuss it, and then they can bring their comments, or you could just email those individually.
So, all that being said, um, I could be at the nineteenth, I cannot be at the third. Um, I know.
Bummer, cause Jason's gonna be at the night.
Jason, would you be available to come on there?
Uh, yeah.
I can have a Mrs. Vice chair, that would be appropriate. If your chair can't attend.
Yeah, so the, and then as a committee, do we think we would wanna have, I just want to hear input, or do we wanna have a special meeting? Prior to the third? Or are we okay sending comments to Jason by email?
I like discussing things, would, I like to hear other people's thoughts. Um, and discussing things, so I would like. Have a meeting?
So looking at this. Calendar. When, when is the draft budget that's gonna be presented on the nineteenth gonna be done?
I would imagine probably about the day or two days before, sending the board packet, so I would anticipate it would probably need to be. The Monday. Uh, because I know typically they're working on that until the last minute to get it out to the board.
Yep.
And I don't wanna add a new deadline for them, outside of the deadline.
But, yeah.
Our deadline for budgetary changes is this eighteenth of September, and then we're turning it around in twenty-four hours, well, we'll get, we'll get. Actually, we're gonna get information out to the trustees beforehand. For the work session, and then we're gonna cut, so there might be changes that are not included in your packet. Um, because of the dis- because of the deadline on September eighteenth. Um, so you'd be talking on September nineteenth, so there might be some changes, um, in between the date. That Friday that you get your packet and the nineteenth, or the nineteenth, when you have your meeting. Um, if you want to.
Oh, we got it, so that's a first Tuesday of the month, you get to work on, you don't get the first Tuesday on.
No, what, I'm keeping, I'm keeping the trustees busy, and staff is equally, um, as busy, trying to make sure we meet all these deadlines. Um, so trying to add in extra meetings, I'm trying to figure out where to do it at. Um, in conjunction with the other meetings that we have.
The other question that I have is part of the, um, Finance Committee, uh, number E under the ordinance. Is to review reports generated by outside consultants for matters having financial impact, such as utility rate studies, long-term financial planning. Um, and so I know the utility rate first reading to the Board of Trustees is at the September twelfth meeting. Um, so that'll be presented to the Board of Trustees, and then I don't know if you guys would be open to, it's gonna put a lot on your plate for that. Nineteenth or eighteen.
Oh, gotcha, yeah, because it's not a new study, we're just going off the Raftellis. We're just using, we're just using the PAC study, so it's not, it's not a new one.
Okay. So I didn't know if that would make sense to get review on that, I know in the past, we had the roundtable, but we don't have.
Right.
And I can ask tomorrow, I can ask tomorrow if the board wants input on that, and maybe that's the right. Check, I'll ask if the board even wants input, and if they just say no, then I'll.
Yeah, cause if it's not a new report, then.
Okay.
You're gonna make new decisions based on an old report.
We're updating the model with the updated, I think, I'm assuming revenues, expenses, things like that, that have now changed since we had it a closer year ago. And then we're gonna be looking at, okay, what.
There were recommendations in the Raftellis, in the Raftellis study on how to proceed with, um. Our water rates going with over a five-year period, in order to meet that.
So.
I guess. I wonder if you're gonna bring that up, if. Should we see if the board also wants us to be, review the draft budgets, or if we should wait until. Your work sessions are done?
I guess.
Cause that may, that might make this whole, us attending the soon meetings, that might be a little bit more of a moot point.
I think it's good for you guys to meet somebody to attend the work sessions, I think, I think it's important to have. A Finance Committee member there, I'm just trying to figure out how to work in separate meetings to discuss. What'll be presented at those work sessions for.
Right, and that's, I guess, maybe that's more along the lines of what I'm thinking is, and maybe unless the. Board wants our input from these meetings, we may not have to have that on the agenda for September. So I'd be interested to hear.
I'm blessed.
I still think, I still think Jason and I should be there on the.
No, no, it's good, and I think that the, the value to that is. Being able to have additional input, additional eyes, and that's, again, all of it, right, we, we as trustees, we see a certain set of things, we look at this all. Being able to have additional input, additional eyes, and that's again, all of it, right? We we as trustees, we see a certain set of things. We look at this all. Looking at this and that and the other thing. You guys bring a different perspective to that, and I think a lot of times it brings good questions and good ideas that maybe haven't been thought of. Um and the biggest thing for me with trying to keep it into a meeting is it's, I wanna also make sure that. We obviously, we're not gonna bring the entire finance committee up to the table, but I also wanna be able to make sure that all of the members of the finance committee are able to kind of give that input and get that to. Um one person, so we can all ring it up to the Board of Trustees, kind of see what their thoughts are, and I can let you guys know.
I I definitely agree. I I think we. Obviously, definitely in November have that opportunity to review the.
October sixteen.
October. Review the draft budget. Whereas I think as attending the the nineteenth and the third gives us that opportunity to come back and be prepared. To answer questions when we're looking at the draft on the sixteen.
And, you know, looking at my notes, it was, you know, the hope was to have um a a stronger budget to show. The Finance Committee, because we will hopefully have our our estimated revenues by that time. We will be drilling down into what that budget truly looks like. The budget document as opposed to, this is my list, and this is what we can actually afford. So I think that was the hope of, you know, moving. Having you guys talk about it on October sixteenth, still before the budget bonanza, and still before, you know, any. Major decisions are being made, so we can get some input from you guys.
And I think by September eighteen, we kind of need to get some numbers in front of us to prepare us to look at the budget, so really having. Some good audit numbers, some good trial balances, whatever we're at. A really good update from Dawn on the eighteenth to prepare us. For these new meetings, to prepare us for our further budget review would be very helpful.
Dawn has told me his goal is to make finance so boring. That we just yawn, but I'm like, I cannot wait for that day. I am so excited for that day.
You kind of get into this business to not be noticed, so. Talking about the financial reports too much, something's wrong.
But hopefully by mid September, we can have, you think we might have some financial to be able to share? In September?
That's just so, um I the only only hesitation is I haven't been through a whole cycle as far as like looking at the the revenue estimates here. Uh yet, so I I always like to un. Uh what has it go under promise, under promise? Type of thing. So um. The way, the way things are going, it it looks, it looks like that'll be the case, but I I uh I I don't know. The orders have stubbornly not quite closed twenty twenty-one yet. I wanna make sure they don't come up with any curveball, and then. Um and then next week, I get into revenue estimating, haven't revenue estimated here yet, so I'm not sure what uh curveballs. General fund shouldn't be too difficult. The enterprise funds, you know, require a little bit more thought. There there is a lot of money there. Um I wanna make sure everything ties out and it works with the Raftellus report, and I'm not sure what numbers. They were using those meetings to be updated, so it all has to kind of come together. Uh so um. Feel like I'm saying a lot without saying anything.
So we'll see. This is a look see.
My, my hope would be that we would feel good enough about the revenue estimates and um and and everything else that by. Uh September eighteen, not only can we present a budget, here's what we'd like to, you know, to do. But we can tell whether we can afford it or not, and that's that uh that that's my goal. Um I mean, being a little basic. As the unknowns.
Yep, well, then maybe October into the September, you said September nine eighteen.
So I'm, so October ten, I mean, that presentation for for then, every by sure, uh for sure, by then, everything has to be. You know, solid and ready to go. I'm I'm hedging a little bit on the September eighteen is all. I I I think, I think it'll work out there, but so for sure by October ten, we need fund balances, we need revenue estimates, we need. We need to know what we can afford if we're gonna bring something to the board saying, this is what we'd like to do, you know. Can we afford any of that? That we need to do that for sure. My hope is to also have that information uh by September eighteen, um but. Uh again, not having been through it all yet, in all my two weeks' experience. Um I think we can get there. I'm hedging a little bit on that date, but for sure, October ten.
I I I would really like to know the numbers that we're looking at on December eighteen, whether it's just be twenty twenty-two is done and. This is where we're starting, twenty-three, like that those numbers we feel good about that we.
Well, I I could definitely update where where we are and if there's any roadblocks, what they are, and. You know, to give you a sense for all that, uh for sure, but I'm I'm hoping to have worked through whatever roadblocks, or by then. I'm just hedging a little bit on that September eighteen date.
I know there's also a holiday and Uncle birthday in there, so I wanna be realistic. About what our expertise, like what we can come in expecting, so.
Yeah, so that's 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 what we're shooting for uh September eighteen. I'm just hedging a little bit. Uh cuz I'm I'm kind of learning every day, you know, every day I learn something.
Can I ask you, um for the reporting, you do cash basis all year, and then um thirteenth month, you throw in all the. Accrual, okay.
You've done this before, yeah, it's pretty pretty much month to month, um it's gonna be budget basis, cash basis, because that's. Um that's how the budget's done. At the end of the year, you do all your period thirteen entries as far as, you know. Like during the year, you're gonna, you're gonna show a capital project as an expenditure, and you're gonna say, we did this big capital. At the end of the year. You're gonna, somebody's gonna come in and say, well, with that capital project, capitalizable. If it is, we're gonna put it on the balance sheet and reduce the expenditure. Say with that, you know, right now, we're reporting loan proceeds coming into our revenue line item, loan proceeds. From the state um for working on the water plant and the wastewater plant. So it's coming into a revenue line item as loan proceeds revenue. Of course, you know, loans are not revenues, so at in in a period thirteen thing, but during the year, that's helpful to see. It's helpful to see the money coming in and in a. In a, you know, an income statement kind of a look. Because during the year, nobody but us cares about the balance sheet, uh pretty much. We care. But but most people that are managing their budgets, they just want to know how much came in and how much, you know, went out. Um but so, yeah, so at the end of the year, we're gonna take those loan proceeds and take them out of the revenue, put them in a a liability account. You know, record the debt service and all that, so yes, or uh that's that's how we show.
Are any other questions, comments, concerns for Dawn or for Patty on the budget? Plan, are we all feeling comfortable? All right. Well, I will move us into reports, and I don't know what order these, does we just do? So I'll start with Christina and. Uh I don't have anything. Uh Pat?
I don't have anything either.
Um and then John, the trustee here.
Yeah, you're good. Um I think you, I've already got two takeaways, so I'll talk to the board about whether or not they want uh finance committee input on. Rate study as well as draft budgets, and I will bring up my board report tomorrow. And then I will send an email out afterwards, since I will come next meeting again. If you need to. Put it on the agenda, you need to know that before next meeting, so I'll email you guys and let you know what the board says. So other than that, I don't think I have any report.
That reports.
Um nothing, um just the one thing that didn't get mentioned in Don's report was um the policies that everybody's been working on, and. Right now, it's not a priority. Um it is, it is, I didn't want to really think that we had, we weren't working on it. I've been kind of working through. Um a document Pat Johnson has sent me, but. Don wants to have an opportunity to really review it, and I want him to really go through it with a fine-toothed comb, so we'll start working on those policies. As as we have time, but it's not a priority right now, but it's not, not something we've forgotten, so wanted to let you know that.
And policies come to us if. The Board of Trustees want them to come to us for review, correct?
You know, it's. How would you like us to do that? I mean, it's certainly, it's not in the ordinance, and it's not in the bylaws for policies to be reviewed by. Um the Finance Committee, at least that's not the way I've understood it. But um. I'm not opposed to having those policies reviewed by this group to provide input. Um particularly when it came to like the 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 finance.
Talk about it though.
Talk about it.
Policies, right? That's how you control things internally?
Okay, well, if that's, I mean.
I'm would probably default on. The trustees, uh if the trustees. I don't know.
I'll take it back.
Does internal control mean procedure, policy, procedure review?
Yes, I will act.
And then financial reporting processes, we're supposed to review those. What does that entail?
Yeah, I think we we need, we need to leave some clarification on that.
Perfect, I will bring that my board report.
All right, any other reports? Name none, maybe I'm open to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.